For wanting to join me, may I pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America? And to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Um. Katie, do you want to do the honors with the roll call?
Commissioner Blakely.
Here.
Chairman Bradley.
Here.
Commissioner Hallie.
Gladly here.
Commissioner Klein.
Present.
Commissioner Mobley. Not here and Vice Chair Sights. Not present and Commissioner Wells.
Here.
Next on our agenda is the approval of our minutes from January 11th, 2022. Do I have a motion and discussion?
I make a motion to accept the minutes of that meeting.
Second.
Any discussion before we vote on it? If not, Katie, do we need a roll call or just?
Oh, for this we do, yes.
Okay.
Commissioner, Commissioner Blakely.
Yes.
Chairman Bradley.
Yes.
Commissioner Hallie.
Yes.
Commissioner Klein.
Yes.
And Commissioner Wells.
Yes.
I will give Chris, Commissioner Mobley, a call tomorrow. To make sure, you know, he's available and whatever, just to check in with him.
Sounds good.
Yeah.
Well, at this time, I just want to make a couple announcements real quick. This meeting again is going to be held according to the Brown Act as currently effect under the State Emergency Services Act. With the Governor's Emergency Declaration related to the COVID-19 situation. And the Governor's Executive Order, which is N 2920, which was issued in March 17th, 2020. Which allows the attendance of members of the Planning Commission, city staff and public to participate through teleconference, video conference or both. Also wanted to be noted that we may agree to disagree. We may, but we will be respectful to one another. All comments will be directed to the issue at hand. And addressed to the Planning Commission and personal attacks will not be acceptable. At this time, we're going to have oral comments from the public. And I know Katie, at this time, you can post something up for anybody in the public that wants to call in. I just want the public to be aware that you may be heard in any item of interest that's not on the agenda. Speakers addressing the commission will be limited to three minutes per speaker. And also please be advised that by law, the commission is not allowed or not able to deliver or liberate or take action. When issues presented during oral comments. Thank you, Katie, for posting that.
I will say for the record that Commissioner Mike Mark Sights is present now.
Thank you.
Hi, Mark.
Thanks, Liz. Hi, Mike.
Oh, there's his face. Any ringing dinghies coming in there, Katie? We'll give it another minute here and see if we get any calls. Well, any calls yet, Katie?
No, we have no calls.
Well, entertain a motion to close up oral comments at this time.
I'll second that.
Well, somebody has to make the motion.
Oh.
I'll make the motion.
I'll second that. There, couldn't see anything, sorry.
Katie, it's in your court. Do we just vote on this or just?
We do not need to vote to close.
Okay. Then we can move on to our new business. And our new business is going to be with regards to the design review of a new illuminated LED sign on an existing sign pole at the Ace Hardware location. And this is going to be consisting of a new illuminated LED sign. The applicant is going to be MKR Investments. The agent of record for this is going to be All Point Signs and it's on the Assessor's Parcel Number 2016, excuse me, 061-026. And the address for the project at hand is going to be 140 South Fortuna Boulevard. In its own commercial thoroughfare. At this time, I think I'd like to turn it over to staff for their comments and notes and presentation, Liz.
Q Commissioner Bradley and planning commissioners. So as Chairman Bradley described the title, the applicant is requesting approval of a new sign to be placed on an existing pole. That their business Ace Hardware on Fortuna Boulevard. And I'm going to go ahead and share the screen so we can present image. Okay, so not sharing. So this is the existing sign. And at the storefront or at the site on Fortuna Boulevard. And you can see the main business sign Ace Hardware. And then the sign to be removed is the existing sign where the letters are inserted. And the new sign would be placed below the existing, so just the smaller one would be removed. And then the new sign is approximately the same size as the existing, so the sign area would increase to some degree. It would be approximately five feet by 11 feet. And it is an LED sign, so it's lighted. And it's designed to have moving messages, so you know, the business and then promotions and sales and items for sale and messages and things like that. So with regards to the size, you know, let me move forward. So this is the sign design and some project information, so it does confirm that the existing sign would be replaced. The five by 11 sign will be welded to existing post, angle iron, et cetera. So then to the right, you can see the LED side, so it is slightly smaller, according to that image. And then this is a comparison of the two side by side. So the sign area, it does meet the sign area allowance of the Fortuna Municipal Code, which for this site, the sign area is based on the parcel frontage, so they are allowed 253 square feet. And the total site area, so I did have the applicant's agent calculate the sign area for the entire site. And the total sign area is 200 feet. So they meet the sign area and I did confirm those measurements. The one concern with municipal code is that the sign may not move. It may not flash, revolve, move or be animated in any way. So what we do, you know, just by matter of course, over the years, the way we implement that is to allow, you know, we have to determine, well, what is moving? And so we established a standard that it may move, they may change the sign message once an hour, so they can time it, so that it's not flashing or moving or animated.
Or streaming. It's not streaming.
Streaming, thank you. So I did add that as a condition of approval, just to confirm that. And I'll just point out, as I did in the staff report, a couple of moving signs, streaming signs in the city are on government property, so that's at the Veterans Hall and at the high school. Otherwise, we have let people know that their sign's not allowed to stream and they've, you know, everyone has complied, I believe, it might, hopefully there's not one or two that's gotten biased. So that's really all the information I have. The packet does have the findings from the municipal code, because the design review. The scope of the design review requirements, it does include signs in there, new signs. And then the resolution is on page 14. And that's all I have, and I'll pass that back to the chairman.
Does anybody have any questions of Liz? Or discussion matter?
I'm satisfied that there is no streaming involved with the sign. Change the message once an hour. I don't think is a problem, but to, to open the door to streaming signs in cities is not a good thing, in my opinion.
I, I agree with that.
I have a question, you know, being newer on the commission, tell me why we don't do that? Like, why is it bad to have the streaming? Is it a distraction to traffic or what was the thinking on all that?
It can be a distraction to traffic. I don't know of any, you know, analysis. It's more of a, an apparent or perceived nuisance. And then, so there's that criteria or that consideration, and then the other might be aesthetics, so some you know, some groups or some people just may not like the aesthetics of a flashing, moving, streaming sign.
Tell me. I was going to say, go ahead.
Sorry, I just tell me more, Sandy or Stephanie, why you guys think, you know?
Well, I agree with Liz. I think that, you know, it is a distraction. You know, if people are driving down the boulevard and there's a streaming sign, their eyes are going to be definitely drawn to that sign. Anything that moves, their eyes are going to be drawn to it, so there is that distraction factor. And the other thing is I'm really not interested in my city turning into Las Vegas with all the flashing signs and and the streaming signs and all of that kind of thing like that, you know, I, I'm not interested in that.
And, and that's my thought, Mark, to answer your question for me. We do own a business, obviously, and my husband would love a flashing sign. And I am glad that every business cannot have a flashing sign. I think light lit up sign is nice, but the flashing does give me a Vegas feel in our small town, I think does not need that.
Okay. And truly, if you get more businesses along corridors that do all those signs and they're flashing, it will become a competition and then it will become a nuisance to the entire community.
Yeah, I agree.
Great, and I didn't mean to interrupt you, Kevin.
No, you, you guys all commented on the things I was going to say, I'm just kind of adding my two cents.
Perfect.
If there's no other discussion, then I'm going to open this up to public comment or any questions they may have on the project. Is the petitioner here by chance, Katie?
No, they're not here.
He's not, he usually is, but he's not, so.
And I sent him a message on Friday and Katie sent him the staff report and the agenda.
Okay.
Was planning on being here, so there may be some unforeseen circumstances.
Well, Katie, would you be willing to flash our little sign up there for the public to call in on this project?
It just can't be flashing, Katie.
Yeah.
Well said, I love it.
Touche, touche.
I just talked out of both sides of my mouth with that comment, didn't I?
I love the, the humor. Hey, while we haven't opened up to a public comment, maybe somebody will call in. Tell me a little bit more, maybe staff or another commissioner. If our ordinance is that, and I'm not suggesting that's a bad thing at all, I'm just inexperienced. Does that not take away the incentive for businesses to purchase an LED light? Like, that probably reduces the demand for in their city, correct? Where they might get something cheaper.
I, may I? My thought on what Mark just asked is that having a lit up sign is, I feel, a positive aspect of spending the money. The flashing part of it is the distraction.
Given your business order, what are your feelings as a business owner?
You, you ask me?
Yeah.
It's like I kind of said, it becomes a competition. I think about my, my peers in my industry, for instance, and it starts becoming a, you know, a back and forth. You know, it could be a little bit of a diatribe of what's going on and you get these different things going and flashing and personally, I just think it becomes too much of a distraction and I think you said it, Sandy, I don't want Vegas. I think that's what it starts to become and it takes away from the whole motif of what we have downtown of our small town atmosphere. Now it's become so commercialized that it takes away the whole idea of what we're trying to create in our downtown community. I know when we bring it back to the table, I have a couple of questions myself with regards to why an exception. That's why I was kind of hoping the petitioner was here.
Oh, can I finish? I have a comment on Mark's question about would they not then have, would they not have an incentive to install that type of a sign? They still might want to have a sign where they can change the message. So they might want to advertise their sales. And probably that's the case here because the, you know, as you recall on the existing sign, it's the type where you can change the message, but you have to do it by hand. So they would have to, you know, go out there with a ladder and post the letters into the grooves. So this way, they don't need to physically, you know, get up to the height of the sign. They can, I'm sure, just do it by computer.
Yeah.
So they can just advertise. In fact, I think the last message I saw recently was that they had roses available. So, you know, they can advertise what type of products they have for sale. So, yeah, so they may still, you know, that would be why they would still want to purchase an LED sign where you can change the message easily.
Perfect. Liz, are the lighted signs are, are not in violation of our sign ordinance?
Right, like, there's no, there's no prohibition in the municipal code on a lighted sign, so it can be internally lit. Or externally with lamps.
You know, can I, let's come back to public comment, then we'll continue this conversation if there's. Katie, has there been any call in yet? If not, I'd entertain a motion to close public comment.
I make a motion to close public comment?
I don't think we need to vote on that, do we, Katie? So I bring it back then to the commission. I'm sorry, I just wanted to close up and not get crossing wires here a minute. So I was trying to, I was reading it, I thought I was reading there is an exception because the Veterans Hall and the school got an exception to this, which makes me think that based on, I hadn't, I was trying to look into this, I couldn't, didn't have enough time to do it. Is there an ordinance that says that they can't have this sign, but we're looking for an exception?
They are not looking for an exception, and the ordinance prohibits it.
In what?
And I read that, it's section 17.05.180.
Okay.
And what I read is, was directly from the code. Flash may not, says shall not flash, revolve, move or be animated in any way.
Okay.
Perfect, you probably already said this, Liz, but the government agencies only within the city can be exempted from that flashing and movement.
Well, government agencies are automatically exempt from local zoning codes. So we have no authority to enforce any zoning codes.
You're talking about state, federal?
State, federal, yes, now, we've looked it up on.
Yeah, it's something I'm familiar with because of the, of the fairgrounds at Crescent City are owned and operated by the state, not the county. Although it's the county fair, it's still, that property is owned and run and governed by the state.
Oh, I'll point out, the veterans building that property and the building are owned by the county, actually. And maybe they lease it to the veterans. So it is actually a county building.
So a church would not be up for that exemption, correct?
That's right.
Hopefully churches would have better taste than to do that.
Well, if there's no further discussion, I'd be willing to entertain a motion on this matter. Unless there's other questions for Liz.
I will make a motion to adopt Resolution P-2022-3079. Resolution of the Planning Commission of the City of Fortuna approving design review for a new illuminated LED sign on an existing sign pole.
I second.
All right, we'll call vote, Commissioner Blakely.
Yes.
Chairman Bradley.
Yes.
Commissioner Hallie.
Yes.
Commissioner Klein.
Yes.
Vice Chair Sights.
Yes.
And Commissioner Wells.
Yes.
Great. Seems like our next thing on the agenda is going to be Liz again with the staff presentation of the Senate Bill nine regarding the state mandated procedures for urban lot splits and two unit projects. And if I may ask real quick, Liz, you're going to give us an introduction, then we're going to be entertaining this on our next meeting, correct?
That's right, so this went to the council, I told you at the last meeting that this was going to the council as an urgency ordinance, so what that means is it would take effect immediately, so this is now actually in effect, but it's an urgency ordinance. And the, I worked with, or the city attorney worked with us on drafting the, the ordinance itself and the findings and just the language, making sure it met you know, the, any legal requirements for code adoptions, as he always does, and also for urgency ordinances. So there's a government code section that specifically allows urgency ordinances and you know, their terms and findings that need to be made, that can be made on a health and safety basis or a threat to the public health and safety. So he made sure that the right language was in that code. And so it, it is in effect. Oh, but the, so the city attorney also recommends that we adopt a regular ordinance, you know, so outside of the urgency process. It's just urgency ordinance is just have a tendency to attract attention and concern, and so, you know, someone could bring a suit. Not in this case, we haven't had any comments or any objections. And we don't expect any, but just overall, it's more secure to have a regular code adoption process, and that's where you know, the draft code goes to the planning commission at a public hearing and you make a recommendation to the council. And then the council holds a public hearing, adopts the ordinance, and then by state law, there's a second reading. So it goes to the council two times under the normal process, so that way.
Liz, don't we have that already?
Not for, not for this particular matter, not for SB9, so it has not gone through the regular process.
Okay.
That's what, how we would, that's how we normally treat an ordinance adoption. So there's a public hearing, you know, an opportunity for the public to speak, it gets posted in the paper on the city website and all of that, and then it would go to the council twice. So that's what we will be doing with this ordinance. And since there wasn't any time to post a notice for you guys, the 10 day requirement, I thought it would be nice to just introduce it to you at this meeting, you know, to a more casual workshop type of meeting. This did get noticed in the regular manner, but that's just 72 hours, so it's been since Friday. And so then at your next meeting, you know, we'll, we'll notify, we'll do the 10 day notification. And then you can make a recommendation at the next meeting. And what I do intend to do is, you know, this isn't an urgency or an interim ordinance. And so I, I am going to bring you some options as to what, you know, and with having more time, you can consider ways to maybe improve it or, you know, adjust it, tweak it, whatever. So you'll understand more after I go through it to see where, there are certain limitations where you know, we're adopting the state requirements. And those are mandated, but then they do allow object, what they call objective standards as well. So let me go through it and this will be maybe not too long, five to 10 minutes. We'll see, maybe 15, hopefully not, let's see. Okay. Okay. So just what we'll be discussing is why are we adopting, or why did the city adopt an urgency ordinance? What is SB9? What are the state requirements? And then what are the proposed code amendments? So, let's see, so the urgency ordinance does have a government code that allows it, it's for public health and safety impacts. It does bypass the planning commission, it goes straight to the city council. And it gets adopted immediately. And there is no second reading as there normally would be, so it's really intended to respond to an urgent matter where we need a code in place. And because, the reason it was done in this case, the health and safety issues, it, SB9 dramatically increases housing density in single family zones due to a much greater degree than is otherwise allowed under our normal code, which I'll show you why. There's, the state law provides little guidance, it poses health and safety impacts, as you'll see in the, in the presentation. So the, this ordinance, as it was adopted, does have some measures that do put a little more of a framework. Some, some limited standards where those are allowed by law. And it also establishes an application and review process, so it just provides clarification to the public who may want to create an SB9 project. And to, you know, staff and to the planning commission. So just provide some, some measure of security, both in the standards and in the approval process. So what is SB9? So it's a state law that came into effect on January 1st, and it requires that all cities grant ministerial approval of urban lot splits and two unit projects. So ministerial means that it's approved by, at the staff level. So an applicant submits a site plan and it gets reviewed. We may not hold a public hearing, so it would not be what we call a discretionary approval. So if they meet certain criteria, then they must be approved. We don't have you know, any means to look at it subjectively. It's got to be an objective analysis. So I will describe what urban lot splits are. Basically, a single family parcel may be split into two parcels. And also SB9 allows to, what we call two unit projects. So every parcel may now have two single family residences. This is similar to the ADU law that Fortuna adopted a few months ago in late 2021. It's not quite the same, this is a little bit more severe and more dense, as I'll show you. So here's an example of what it does. So this is our normal single family lot developed with an existing single family residence. So that could be, you know, anywhere from the neighborhoods, Longdale neighborhoods, Hampton Heights, Kenmore, you know, the new, the cul-de-sacs that are relatively new. You know, this is maybe a 6,000 minimum square foot lot. At the two unit project would allow two single family residences, so you know, the existing unit and a new unit. Now, the state law does not have any minimum or, I'm sorry, any maximum unit size, so. Or I'm sorry, any maximum uh, lot uh, unit size, so without the state law. I'm sorry, without adopting a local code, any size of a second unit, a single family second unit. Um, could be constructed, now the proposed code or the existing code that was adopted does have a maximum eight hundred square foot. Size on that, on both units, um, in particular for any new newly constructed unit. So right there, um, the code does place a restriction that's going to minimize the impact or minimize the density. So that's the two unit project, no subdivision, just two two units now. Um, the lot split allows subdivision of any single family lot, so that can be in Longdale, it can, you know, just our. Standard relatively small, normal typical sized lots, um. So the lot split can would be approved at a staff level, no public hearing. And then now you may build two single family residences on each of the lots, so here you have, you know. A typical neighborhood, a typical lot with one unit. Um, it gets subdivided and now you have four units, so that's a pretty. Severe increase in density and this is what's had cities and counties, you know, all across the, all across California over the past year. This has been in the news, it's been in, um, you know, the planning literature, legal literature, all of that. Um, and it's been protested pretty strongly by government agencies, by the League of California Cities. Um, it was a pass passed by the legislature and then signed by um, the governor in September, so it is. Though it is the law now. Um, it is supported by, you know, the purpose is to create affordable housing, so that's the state's purpose and it is supported by. Um, affordable housing groups, so that's kind of the background, did you have any questions on this particular, on these scenarios? Everyone's clear, this, you know, existing unit, of course, there could be a vacant parcel.
Liz, I do have a question, or Mike, you can go.
I'm sorry, what?
I have a question, uh, just clarification I'm looking for, so in the middle example here, we got a two unit project. Uh, one of those is an additional unit, let's say the house is a sixteen hundred square foot house, the original house. Are you saying that that second dwelling is limited to eight hundred square feet?
Yes.
So what happens when you get, could that conceivably in that example, could that conceivably become before unit property, if you want to split the lot?
Yes, you may, you may build, you may have two um, houses and then you may later split the lot. And create two more, what you can't do, the the law, the state law says, um, you can only do one subdivision. So once as once a lot has gone undergone um, a subdivision, it cannot then. Um, be re-subdivided, no matter the size.
So once you have two units, you can't split it and make it four unit.
Um, you know. I would have to look, um.
Cause I looked this up today and I mean, in the law, it 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 looks like you could do that.
You may be able to, let me get back to you on that. I believe you can, I think it's just the subdivision that can't be redone. So I will get back to you on that.
Okay.
So my question would be, we obviously within the city of Fortuna can now have. People divvying up every lot in the city, correct?
If well, I.
Wants to.
I mean, yes, that's true, um.
There's not every lot, but any lot in the city could be divided in half, correct?
Yeah, if they have the room, so most of the six thousand square foot lots that are already developed with one. Single typical single family residents aren't gonna have the room to. Split it and then create another lot and at the end of the presentation, I show some um, aerial, you know, some examples. Of what where it might work and where it won't work, so there's not going to be, you know, a a rush of these projects. That's going to, you know, quadruple the um, density of of everyone's neighborhoods, so. It's really going to be in the like the hillside areas, um, where like the zoning is a half acre or an acre, they're gonna have the room to. Split and build a house, an extra house and put in the driveway and things like that, and the smaller lots really aren't gonna have the room. In most cases, there are, you know, certainly some vacant parcels, larger vacant parcels in the city. Um, scattered throughout the city, like in Camden Heights and other areas, um, where. You know, your neighbor may may successfully build one, but it's not gonna be a lot.
I have another question relative to what you just said.
Uh huh.
So it in some areas, uh, that that have no sewer, it's the minimum building size is one acre. So is this gonna impact those areas?
Yeah, so zoning wise, these would work. So, um, the one acre zone areas, it mostly in the Hillside Drive and Nelson Lane. Um, the state law does allow. Um, yeah, uh, onsite sewer system, so septic tanks. Um, but those have to get approved by the county and I know the county has the one acre minimum and there are certain setbacks, separation requirements. So, um, I think those would automatically, uh, you know, be denied by the county. I'm not sure, um, how that would play out, but that's certainly what it appears. Zoning wise, uh, we can't prohibit it in the state, because the state says that they are allowed to have an onsite symptom, s- system. But certainly the county's, you know, health standards are going to prevail in that case.
Okay.
I think that's a good question to pursue, write it down.
I had a quick question. I just wanted to confirm, does the original house on the site have to remain, or could it be purchased, demolished and two homes could be built?
It may be demolished, there are restrictions, um, houses may not be demolished. For development of a SB nine, two unit or lot split.
Okay.
If if, um, they are, they've been rented in the last three years, if. Or if they have a deed restriction, um, for affordable housing.
Thank you.
Okay, so we'll continue. So these are the standards under the state law, each lot must be at least twelve hundred square feet, so you cannot make a lot smaller than twelve hundred square feet. Um, which is, that's a small lot, you know, if one were able to successfully. And subdivide to twelve hundred square feet, um, right now, the city's minimum, minimum lot size is six thousand square feet, so this is new. Each lot must be at least forty percent of the original lot, so you couldn't split it where it's thirty percent, so that's gonna prove that. In most cases, a very tiny lot, so the ratio would be forty percent, sixty percent. Uh, may require onsite access and utility easements, offset improvements are prohibited. And typically, off, you know, subdivisions do require offset improvements, which would be, um, they usually street. Street improvements, um, sewer water main extensions, things like that, so. Mm-hmm, so the state is saying, you know, prohibiting or reducing the cost of a subdivision, but also impacting. Health and safety. Lot must be within a single family residential zone, so they're not allowed in multifamily zones or commercial zones. Can't subdivide a lot that was previously subdivided by SB nine, so that's what I was saying, where they can only do an SB nine split once. So an owner can't keep subdividing to smaller and smaller lots, adjacent parcels cannot be subdivided by the same owner, so. Um. You know, the same person can't do two lots adjacent to each other, and I think that's to minimize investment, um, developments. Um, kind of to protect residents and renters and homeowners. Where are they prohibited, so the code, the state code does have a number of places where these are prohibited and typically, um, you know, they're sort of environmental issues. Not allowed in wetlands, earthquake fault zones, high fire hazard areas, hundred year floodplains, prime farm land or lands under conservation. Easement, and that's by statute. So on the two unit development, so either on a, you know, you have a vacant parcel or it's developed a one house. Um, or you've done a subdivision, now you've got a vacant parcel, um, we must allow at least eight hundred square feet, so we can't restrict. Uh, anything smaller than that, um, no setback for an existing structure, so, you know, if they have us. Uh, non-conforming or grandfathered in, um, setback, we can't deny it based on their existing setback. Um, we must allow a four foot side and rear setback if. Uh, the unit couldn't otherwise be built, so the code, our code adopts confirms that the existing. Whatever the setbacks are in, say in the R one six zone, those may be. Um, those would be required unless an eight hundred square foot unit could not be otherwise be built, then we must allow a four foot side and rear setback. And that's the same standard that we saw or that we adopted in the ADU code. And that that just is a repeat, so it comes from state. Um, in this case, um, one parking space per unit can be can be required, and so we did adopt that in the local code. Um, we cannot uh, require a parking space if it's within a half mile of a high quality transit corridor, so a bus line. Um. But. Uh, we didn't actually, we may, we have bus lines, but we don't have a high quality and that means, um, that's based on the number of. Bus stops with uh, fif- every fifteen minutes during peak demand, so. Um, you know, the local bus route is typically like an hour or more between stop or between bus stops. So, in other words, we will require one space per, um, unit. Uh, an agency may prohibit ADUs, engineer ADUs, um, and so our code does prohibit ADUs. Engineer ADUs, um, you know, some jurisdictions don't have this prohibition, so those four. Four units could be multiplied by, you know, an additional ADU on each of the lots. Um. And we think it's reasonable to not increase the density further, so accessory, you know, additional accessory dwelling units are not allowed. Under the code. Um, there are restrictions on the ability to deny, um. So it's. Really what the state law is saying is that we have to make us, um. There has to be a preponderance of evidence, and so basically the language is that it has to be something that can be. Um, measured, we can't just say, well, you know, we don't think it's compatible or we don't like it. Um, they're making, they're kind of putting restrictions on that, um, the building official makes the written findings, our code does change that to the. Community Development Director. Um, in our, we worked through the city attorney on making sure that was allowable and he said, because the director, community development director. Is the. You know, manages the building department and the planning department, so it's effectively the same, an equivalent. But they need to be made in in writing the findings. Um, rental and occupancy, so short term rentals are not allowed and those are, you know, like Airbnb's, um. And, uh, for lot splits, an applicant must submit an affidavit that they intend to occupy one of the units as their principal residence for at least three years. So that doesn't apply on just a two unit project, it has to be, that applies to lot split, so the. Owner must live in the, live in the main unit for three years and it may not, um. Displace renters or affordable housing.
This is that three years prior or during?
Um. So during, so they get their project and they're signing, they're signing an affidavit that they intend to occupy it for three years. After they get their project. And that's to, um. That's to minimize, um, investment. Investment projects, so we're, you know, a, an investment company buys up. You know, a bunch of homes and turns them all into rentals, so it's to kind of protect homeownership. Sequo, California Environmental Quality Act is not, does not apply, so we can't, um. Require any, you know, like the environmental reviews, so it's automatically exempt. And the purpose of that is to streamline, so they say to saying, we don't consider this an impact, it's not a project. Um, and they're kind of streamlining approval, they're removing roadblocks to approvals. So that, yeah.
Uh, on that one, uh, the thought that comes to mind when I read that is, is that gonna impact what we talked about earlier with the, uh, septics?
Um.
Just a question.
Yeah.
Any avenue you might want to go down?
Yeah, thank you. So the draft zoning standards, well, they're adopted now, but the main, you know, and for the most part, the state. The state, um, requirements are clear and must be followed. If we don't have, if, you know, the city does not have a local code on SB nine, then we would, we would have to work directly out of the state law. So, um, and it does allow objective standards to be adopted, as long as they don't prohibit. Or restrict, um, the SB nine projects, um, so the zoning standards that were adopted. Um, include these, so that that the unit size, that's the structure, could be between five hundred and to eight hundred square feet. And no larger than eight hundred, um, confirmed to ADUs are not allowed on any SB nine parcel. It codifies or confirms that the city's zoning setbacks would prevail unless they otherwise prohibited. And at least an eight hundred or a up to an eight hundred square foot unit, um, offsite improvements are allowed where required for health and safety. So on subdivisions, this would be, um, it was determined that the sidewalk, so that's normally, that would be an offsite improvement. That is not, the state doesn't allow offsite improvements, um, but through the city attorney, we made. Um, the code has a a finding that sidewalks are required for health and safety, so. We will be requiring them on subdivisions, you know, for accessibility. Um, just for public safety as you're in the street, uh, so that you're not walking in the street. Um. We we clarified or just confirmed the denial findings and an appeal process. So really, this is to, um, you know, smooth out the implementation process and what do we do if someone? Um, protest the city's, city staff's approval, we needed to clarify the appeal process, so that's kind of why. You know, we want to have a local code, even though the state, um, you know, the state. Has some direction, it's really not the city's process and we wanted to just clarify, so there wouldn't be any confusion. Um, and that legally, these proceedings would be, um, protected. And then clarifies and codifies the administrative and permit review process, so. Um, so this, here's an example, this is, you know, typical neighborhood, this is Shamrock Drive, Joseph Street. Um, and it's southwest of Renegale Road and, um, so a typical single family residence, six thousand square foot minimum lot size. It's, uh, constructed with a, an existing single family home and you can see there's really not gonna be the room to split this. At that sixty forty ratio, maybe you could to some degree, but the other problem is if you're building a house in the back. Um, you know, parking is required and they're not going to have, um. Access to, say, a driveway, because they've only got a five foot setback there, so. Uh, I think they're really gonna have a hard time, here's a kind of maybe a better example, you can kind of see the the layout. They've just got a strip in the front and the strip in the back, that's probably fifteen feet. And they're not going to be able to make that sixty forty ratio that you need to, um, create a, a subdivision. And they're not going to be able to make that sixty forty ratio that you need to create a subdivision. Now, the vacant parcels that are kind of scattered, so the subdivision isn't quite built out. I think these are built out now, but there's, you know, other vacant parcels, you know, within the subdivision. And this one would be able to have an SB nine split and then two houses on each of those lots. So this house could end up with, or this lot could end up with four houses, you know, and that would be an impact to the, to the neighborhood, to the neighbor. You're certainly increasing the density now from what the expectation was when these people built their homes. So that kind of explains why the interim ordinance was adopted. So now the city has a maximum structure size. So at least those four units would be, you know, somewhat smaller than they might otherwise construct. And then the other type of lot would be these older, maybe scum in the heritage lot. You know, this is like the old, old house with the old farm, and they could certainly split this and then build two houses on each lot. They could only do that once. So you're really not going to, you know, be, you're not going to be able to keep subdividing that into smaller and smaller units. So this is kind of the range of what we would see. And, you know, so for the most part, you're not going to get this massive densification in these existing neighborhoods. This is Rancho Buena Vista, and these are half acre minimum lot size, the zoning. And, you know, there is room on these lots to do a forty sixty split. So this is the type of neighborhood that could be impacted. This neighborhood does have city sewer in the, in the road. So they probably, you know, would be able, they would be able to do the, you know, the sewer for that lot. Yeah, the hillside area, I don't, I don't think I have it. No, I don't have an image of that, but those are one acre lots and that neighborhood does not have, I mean, Mike's right, it does not have city sewer. So that would be an issue. So that's all on the presentation. And do you have any questions? You don't, there's no action to take tonight. What I'll do for the next meeting is, you know, bring the draft ordinance for your consideration, and that would be a recommendation to the council. And I will also, can I do a survey of what other cities have done, what kind of standards they've adopted? And, you know, then we'll take a look at them and see if they're allowable and kind of give you options for what you might want to.
I, I have one request, Liz.
Yeah.
Can we get hard copies for the next meeting?
Yes, absolutely.
Please and thank you.
Liz, I have a question. The Rancho Buena Vista that you have up, if you could, give us an example of how that would go down. And I wanted to clarify, you said the new, say, one of these is split and the owner wants to do it under SB nine. The new house on the second lot can only be eight hundred square feet, correct?
Yes.
So give, give us an example, like pick a lot and where would the new, up on Rancho Buena Vista, how would people get into that new lot in the back?
Yeah, so so the yellow line shows where, you know, potential lot split would be, the subdivision line. And so now you would have one lot with the existing home, and they could build an eight hundred square foot house in the front. And then the back lot could build two, two units. And they would access the lot with the driveway. So the lot, so through the subdivision process, you know, they would create an easement. And then that it would need to be paved is our zoning code. And that's the other thing that we can the, the state law does allow implementation or application of existing standards. And our existing standard is that that driveway would be paved and it would need to be, I think we, I think we adopted twelve feet, ten or twelve feet, I think it's twelve feet, a twelve foot driveway would need to be paved. And then the two, that, so that's how they would access. So that would be considered like our flag lot standard.
Is Rancho Buena Vista, is that a HOA?
It is.
So SB nine just completely does away with the restrictions of homeowners associations.
No, that's a good point. It does not. The ADU ordinance, so the state law mandating ADUs did dictate that HOAs and CCNRs would not be in, could not prevent an ADU. But in this case, they took that back. They did not include that. They, well, they specifically state that HOAs and CCNRs could prevail and could prevent if that's what the HOA says.
They could prevail against SB nine, but not auxiliary housing unit?
Right.
Okay.
Clarification.
Liz, would you mind going back to the last slide that had the heritage property on it? So would that property line, if it got subdivided, would it have to be a perfect straight line? Or could it be kind of like a zigzag or kind of curl around to make the forty sixty split?
No, it could be irregular.
Okay, because everything that was shown was, you know, squares or rectangles. I just wanted to check.
Yeah, the requirement for a subdivision is that what we look at are the zoning setbacks. So it could be, I think it would be five feet on the interior side, twenty feet in the front, five feet on the other side and fifteen in the back. And then the remaining area would normally be, well, no, the total area of the lot normally would be six thousand square feet. And then they would need to meet the setback, be able to meet the setbacks. So what we would look at is, you know, can they build at least an eight, an eight hundred square foot home within those setbacks? That's really what we would be looking at.
I'm sorry, what was the four feet? You said it had to be four feet. Does that mean on either side? Or did I lose?
Yeah, the state law in our code says on SB nine projects that the city has to allow a four foot setback, as small as four feet. If they otherwise can't construct that eight hundred square foot unit. So if our normal stance setbacks are too strict and won't allow an eight hundred square foot structure, then we must allow a four foot setback on the side and the rear. So normally, it's not going to, that's not going to be a big deviation on the side because that's already, that's a five foot setback under our code. And the rear, this would be the rear that would normally be fifteen feet. So they could go as small as four feet. So I'm kind of looking at what would the impact be to the neighbor. So the house could be nine feet closer to the, to that property line to the neighbor.
Thank you.
Those, thank you for a great presentation.
Yeah, thank you.
Thank you.
Yeah, hopefully that'll kind of make it easier. I know a lot of times when you get your packet, you know, if it's a complicated project, I do really appreciate that you guys look at it in a really short amount of time. And, you know, take that in and analyze it and understand it. And you guys do an amazing job of that. So I'm glad to be able to explain it to you, you know, kind of a complicated, it's a complicated situation. So hopefully that'll help when it comes to the next meeting.
Well, it definitely softens the blow from what we were anticipating.
Yeah, definitely.
I know, the ADU, the ADU issue was challenging. It was difficult.
Yes, coupled with everything else. If there's no other further questions.
I just wanted to say something. I do think I'm kind of reiterating, but Liz did a really good job because I have read newspaper articles, online things from both in California and out of California talking about this. And I think she really, you did a really good job, Liz, in making this understandable and giving us a basis for which we want what's best for Fortuna specifically in the future, along with illustrations. So you did a very understandable job of
Yeah. I, I agree. I agree, Mark.
Great.
And with that said, Liz, you're never allowed to leave this position ever.
Yeah.
I'm not getting any older.
I'm glad we can have some fun with our jobs. So if there's no further discussion, there's no action to be taken. At this time, I think we have some staff communication review. And I think that's going to be turning, isn't this going to be turned over to you, Katie?
Yes, so we did the survey and it would be evenly chosen across the board each time slot. However, we did have commissioners that were not able to meet the morning meeting and then commissioners that couldn't make the evening meeting. So we've decided on the first and third Tuesdays at two o'clock, if that works for everybody. And I think we should, we should set some parameters on the, you know, a time slot from two to three, or, you know, however long you guys want to, want to go.
You read my mind. That was the first thing that came to my mind was we should set a, an agenda time limit of either one to one and a half hours max. I, my suggestion, I don't know if I can, I guess I can, because it's not really a, it's an ad hoc committee. So I can say some things. My suggestion would be we plan for an hour with the understanding that we maybe a lot, hour and a half slot, just in case we do have a little carryover. That would be my thought, but try to keep it to a one hour limit.
Let's do it.
I concur.
I triple click her.
I'm not sure if that's a vote of ascension or but Katie, is there any other action that you need from us tonight with regards to that?
No, we don't need to make it an action item, just.
Do you and I need to sit down before and kind of come up with some agenda items to start out the initial meetings or?
It would probably be good to have a framework, you know, the priority items that we want to go over. I know that you had discussed that, you know, to begin with, it would be all of the commissioners. And then, you know, as the things progress, you know, it can be broken down into smaller, smaller pieces. You know, as folks are interested.
It becomes items of priority, so to speak. And action items therefore. Well, Katie, why don't you let me know when you'd like to sit down and I'll try to accommodate your schedule.
Okay.
Is there any other questions or comments that if there is, my suggestion would be if you have some things that you think need to be a part of our subcommittee, that you email them to Katie or myself. So we can look at those and put them into, I guess, into an action item or an agenda.
Again, Kevin and Katie, we're looking at first and third Tuesday afternoons.
Yeah, two PM, I believe.
Two PM.
Right, Katie?
Yes.
And you'll, you'll be sending us a Zoom invitation?
Yes. Did you want us?
Are we in person? Did we want to meet in person now, some of us? On those, the first and third Tuesdays?
Would you say that again, Mark?
Did we, were we going to meet in person?
That sounds great.
Ad hoc.
Why not?
I think, I think we ought to have the option to meet in person, but if some people, because of their work schedules, can't, can hop in through Zoom because of the travel issues and being able to get back to it.
Is that amenable to you, Stephanie?
I can definitely be at City Hall for this.
And are we allowed to use City Hall based on the COVID nineteen?
Yeah, let me check with the city manager and the risk manager and see if that's allowable. It's
The only other way you could do it in person would be if we had an offsite location, I think. With the understanding we'd have to have the ability to be able to have some internet connections for those that want to zoom in. So we'll have, there's some things I think we may have to, to work on before we cut that into chase. So
Why don't we just proceed ahead with Zoom and figure out the other thing while, along the way?
Yeah, so the first meeting will be, I believe, February first, which is next week. So yeah, let's, let's start with Zoom and
Yeah. Then Liz can let us know. I, I really doubt that we'll be able to use the city facilities to meet in person, just because we're already kind of, that would be violating what we already are putting in place with these meetings. So I could be wrong, but I don't think they'll take an exception to the rule.
Follow up to that?
Go ahead.
Regarding our meetings, any, any COVID updates from staff? Are we on set for it to last until the end of the century?
That's what I was thinking.
There have been no updates that I've heard as far as. We do, we, we have got some of the infrastructure in place in council chambers. But currently, council chambers has, it's become, it's being used for other things right now, so.
Well, thank you, everyone. Katie, let me know when you want to sit down, okay?
Yeah.
Try to get something together before next week.
Liz, did you want to talk about the, the conference training? Anywhere with that?
So we're, four, four commissioners have indicated in, you know, an interest in attending. We searched really hard for the budget to fund that. We were only able to get the budget funds for three commissioners. So there's only three spots.
Well, I've been to two of them. I'm willing to bow out if somebody hasn't been to some.
I've been to one and I'm not going to this one.
Yeah, I, I can't go. I'm too full with school and work.
Who's all, said they wanted to go, I'm assuming, Mark?
I definitely wanted to go. I hope that's okay. I, I want to be the first opportunity, if that's all right.
Well, I'm sorry, Michael.
Oh, I just was saying, I was hoping that I could be the first opportunity to go. I want to learn as much as I can, since I'm the newbie.
Well, there's four of us. I'm one of the four and I've just bowed out. So looks like
Perfect.
Mark can go.
So Mike Wells, Mike McKine and Mark Saitz.
Yeah.
Wonderful. Thank you.
I've been to two of them. And I'm going to tell you, it's, and Stephanie, I know has been to it, and Sandy has. And they've been pretty insightful. I think you're going to find them high opening. And my suggestion would be to, that you sit down with some other commissioners from other cities, big and large, small or whatever. And just kind of pick their brains about how they do some things. You might gain some insight on a few things that might help us as well.
You have no idea how excited I am.
Don't sit down.
Go ahead, Sandy.
Don't sit down at the conference with all three of you together.
Exactly.
Wasn't going to happen, you know?
I don't be afraid to engage the speakers. I have, and it's been quite helpful sometimes, too.
I was planning when we go to not even acknowledge the presence of Mike Wells, if that helps.
What up, Mike?
Understood. And I don't blame you.
Got to meet you guys personally. So I'm going to have to say hi if we haven't done it before then.
Well, there you go. You have to do the COVID hi. There you go. Well, if there's nothing else, I don't know that we have anything else on the agenda. Do we, Liz, or?
No.
Another motion.
I'll make the motion to close.
I'll second that.
All right, real call vote, Commissioner Blakely.
Yes.
Chairman Bradley.
Yes.
Commissioner Hallie.
Yes.
Commissioner Kine.
Yes.
Vice Chair Saitz.
Yes.
And Commissioner Wells.
Yes.
And again, everyone, I just want to say to Liz and Katie, you guys, I can't see how good you guys are being exceptional at your jobs to help us make these meetings go a little shorter, too. And your insightfulness really does help us out quite a bit.
Thank you.
I give it two thumbs up for that. All right. See you guys.
Thank you.